Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome, welcome to Alpharetta City Hall. This is the City Council Meeting in Public Hearing for May 22, 2023. And I want to congratulate you because I believe you have set the attendance record for this year's council meetings. So I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order and note for the record that all members of council are present and accounted for. As always, we do begin our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you're able, please stand and join us. Thank you very much, and we'll begin with several presentations and proclamations. And the first of which will be a proclamation for the 2022-2023 Alpharetta Gymnastics Academy. If Ms. Ashley Parks would join me out front, and members of the gymnastics team. Thanks, sir. So as I mentioned, this is a proclamation for the Alpharetta Gymnastics Team, and I'd like you to just tell us a little bit about that, please.
Okay.
I'll read the proclamation. That's my job.
Okay.
You, you coach your women to figure it out.
All right, well, thank you guys for coming. We really appreciate all of you guys being here. This is Alpharetta Gymnastics Academy. I don't think we have everybody here, but we do have about 100 gymnasts that are on the team, from our developmental team all the way up to our current Level Sixes and our Diamond Athletes. We have some of our coaches that are standing up here as well. They're not all in attendance. But I do want to give a few thank yous tonight. I want to thank all of our families for supporting us the past few seasons. We appreciate it. We could not do it without you. You guys carpool all the kids here. You guys fit gymnastics into the schedule. We know it's a demanding sport, so we appreciate you guys. And second, I want to thank all the coaches up here because we really couldn't do it without you guys. They are super dedicated coaches. Not only are they in the gym many hours throughout the week, but it does take some studying and training and doing things at home behind the scenes. And they have to take time from their own families as well to be in the gym to coach all of our kids, so we want to give them a big round of applause. And then, of course, all the athletes right here, they are very dedicated, they love coming to the gym, and we just hope to see them for a few more seasons. And now I'm going to give it to you.
Thank you very much. So now I'll read the proclamation, and that is a proclamation by the mayor and city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, 2023-2022 Alpharetta Gymnastics Academy. And I will say, there's a lot of names in this, so I'll try my best not to butcher any of them, but don't laugh if I do. So whereas, under the leadership of Alpharetta Gymnastics Academy Director Ashley Parks, the 2023 Alpharetta Gymnastic Academy competition season has been nothing short of successful. This year, as a team, the Alpharetta Gymnastics Academy earned the title of Level Six State Champions. The Excel Diamond placed second in the state out of 11 teams. Excel Bronze placed fourth in the state out of 2018 teams. And Excel Silver placed 10th in the state out of 48 teams. And whereas during this year's state meet, there were over 30 first-place wins, with several Alpharetta gymnasts earning the title of state champions for their competing event. And whereas with hundreds of thousands of gymnasts competing all over the country, the following gymnasts made the country's top 100 charts. Quinn Casey. Eleanor Griffin. Avon Van Gelder. I have to stop watching them when they do that because I lose my place. Placed nationally for their vault scores. And Audrey Haniford. Placed nationally for their floor scores. And whereas the following 2022-2023 Alpharetta Gymnastics Academy team members were regional qualifiers. Lila Allen. Cameron Bragg. Shayla Flanagan. Lindley Jennings. Sarah Mendrozaga. Ally Olmer. Natalie Alvarez. Lucy Grace Connor. Jana Guffey. Sarah Camber. Kristen Merrill. Natalie Vore. Cameron Bagdanshik. Kaitlyn Davis. Natalie Jose. Madison LaFevre. Maddie Scheller. Emery Voe. And Maddie Booker. Erin Deveraux. Kayla Horn. Maisy Marsden. Arzu Terapuola. Whereas the following 2022-2023 Alpharetta Gymnastics Academy team members received individual awards. Lila Allen, bars and double A state champion. Cameron Bagdanshik, vault and floor state champion. Quinn Casey, vault state champion. Shayla Flanagan, beam state champion. Kristen Merrill, bars, beam and AA state champion. Lucy Turner, bars, beam and AA state champion. Natalie Vare, bars and floor state champion. Sarah Mendrozaga, vault, beam, floor and AA state champion. And Maddie Booker, vault and AA state champion. JoJo Case, vault state champion. Erin Deveraux, vault state champion. Kelsey Gorman, floor state champion. Vida Ledford, vault state champion. Emery Voe, beam state champion. And Audrey Haniford, floor state champion. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, do recognize the 2022-2023 Alpharetta Gymnastics Academy for their outstanding achievement this season, and give thanks to Director Ashley Parks and to the parents and the guardians who encourage, lead, and support our young gymnasts in Alpharetta. This 22nd day of May, 2023, by the mayor and the city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia. As I present you this, would you like to say anything else?
Thank you so much. I have one more announcement. We had one team, this was written before this weekend, so we had one team that went to a regional championship yesterday. Our Level Sixes, they competed in Knoxville, and they did fantastic, and they actually placed second in the entire region out of eight states. So if you guys want to do your salute really quickly, all the Level Sixes, everybody salute. These are the girls that went yesterday to Knoxville. We had several champions and two right here, Sarah and Arzu, that are holding their hands up, actually. They made the state team, and all of them qualified to go to Nationals in June in New Orleans. So big round of applause to you guys.
Thank you. Now, do we get a group picture? Does anyone have a camera with a wide lens? Now, our next presentation will be the proclamation for the 2022-2023 Alpharetta High School Women's Lacrosse Team. So if those of you here for this proclamation want to start working your way towards the front. Councilman Dorito. And Brandon Allen. So, we are honored to have the coach and the team members of this successful lacrosse team, and if Coach, you would like to begin?
Sure. Mayor and council, thanks for recognizing us tonight. We had a truly magical season, the best we've ever done, best Alfreda High School's ever done. We finished 17 and 4, we lost to the eventual champions, but I'm extremely proud of the girls. We set numerous records, school records and individual records, and hopefully the next time you see us here, we'll be wearing state championship rings.
That's awesome. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation now, give anyone else a chance to speak if they would like. By the mayor and the city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, this is a proclamation for 2022-2023 Alpharetta High School Women's Lacrosse. Whereas the Alpharetta High School 2022-2023 Women's Lacrosse Team received many awards this season. This year's team not only had the longest winning streak in the history of the program, but also had the most wins in any season at Alpharetta High School. And whereas the Women's Lacrosse Raiders were undefeated at all home games, had their second appearance during the Elite Eight competition, and also earned their first title as region champions. And whereas, she looks a little young, Coach. Additionally, the Women's Lacrosse Raiders hosted their first-ever state playoff game and, for the first time, won two playoff rounds on their home turf. And whereas the following students and coaches are part of the 2022-2023 Women's Lacrosse Raiders. Players, Mac Alizokata, Violet Videmko, Gabby Gavronovich, Janina Kirjanathan, Claire McDonald, Ashley Moran, Whitney Ricks, Annalise Shelley, Sloan Botley, Courtney Eccleston, Lane Gregory, Sahana Krishanthan, Madeline McLaughlin, Malu Nobre, Izzy Sabatini, Ava Upus, Ensley Bloom, Ella Echevaria, Catherine Hinton, Lula Masters, Perry Mixon, Piper Patelis, Scarlett Shannon, Sydney White, Rochny Shimeli, Emily Firestone, Ella Knoll, Phoebe Masters, Giulietta Montiel, Helen Powell, Michaela Shidrawi. With coaches Brandon Allen, PJ Graybeck, Karen Allen, Julia Thompson, and Grayson Beck, Maddie Dewey. Whereas a few players received incredible accolades this season. Claire McDonald scored her 100th goal of her lacrosse career. Sahana Krishanthan completed 100 saves. And Ava Upus set a new goal record at Alpharetta High School of 252 goals during her lacrosse career. Congratulations. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, recognize the 2022-2023 Women's Lacrosse Raiders, coaches and parents for their dedication and determination this season as they lead their team to victory when they won the region championship for the first time ever in Alpharetta High School Women's Lacrosse history. This 22nd day of May, 2023, by the mayor and city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia. He's got his hands full, so would you like to accept this on behalf of him? Would any of you like to make any comments? No?
Um, I just want to say how incredibly proud I am of our team for this season. It was a great season to go out. I'm a senior this year, so it was just an incredible year for the program, and I can't, I have to credit my individual records to the team. I couldn't have done it without them, so I just wish them the best of luck with the next few years.
Thank you very much. So the next proclamation will be for the 2022-2023 Alpharetta High School Men's Lacrosse Team. Anyone would like to come forward and receive this proclamation? Mr. Biller, would you like to say a few words?
Absolutely. First off, thank you for having us, and, or me, rather, and, I mean, funny. Just to say a few words about the season, we didn't get to play the rest of our freshman year when we were five and one. That was taken from us, so just the opportunity to play this season meant so much to the boys who were here that year and to the coaches who were also here that year. But I want to give a special shout out to our coaches, Coach Alex Kavia, Chris Ennis, and CJ Mucker. They all did an incredible job this season, you know, taking time out of their day to come coach us and really caring for the team. You could tell that they put in the hours to make this team elite. As you'll hear, Sweet 16 and 14-3 record, that, that takes a lot of time and a lot of effort. And I'm grateful to the fact I got to share that field with my best friends that I've been growing up with since middle school. I wouldn't, couldn't have asked for a better group of guys to get this done with, and I think we had a special year for not only this year, but years to come, putting the program on the map, putting the city on the map. So it was a great, fun year, and hopefully we run it back next year with a state championship, so.
That's awesome. So I'll go ahead and read the proclamation, which is by the mayor and city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, 2022-2023 Alpharetta High School Men's Lacrosse Team. Whereas the Alpharetta High School 2022-2023 Men's Lacrosse Team received several accolades this season. This year's team not only had a 14-3 overall season record, but also had the most wins in a season since 2008. Whereas the Men's Lacrosse Raiders beat Cambridge High School for the first time in school history, won the region championship for the first time since 2012, competed during the Sweet 16, and won playoffs for the first time since 2016. And whereas the cumulative grade point average of the Men's Lacrosse Raiders was 3.5, these young men are not only incredible athletes and leaders in our community, but are also scholars in the classroom. And whereas the following students and coaches are a part of the 2022-2023 Men's Lacrosse Raiders. Just in time. No worries, man. This is the honor of y'all. So, these are the players of the 2022-2023 Men's Lacrosse Raiders. Jake Biller, Connor Corkle, Ty Fowler, Charlie Howard, Charlie Morrison, Sumner Price, Avery Woods, Henry Bunnerek, Michael Corkle, Jake Gill, Patrick Jones, Holden Morrison, Lucas Prophet, Cameron Woods, Ryan Butch, Liam Dinko, Jack Glencross, Tucker Keller, Lucas Nobles, Cohen Rose, Chapel Young, Brady Corkle, Jackie Sale, Will Hendricks, Hayden Coe, Hayden Packard, Doc Rush. With coaches Chris Ennis, the head family coach, Alex Cavilla, head community coach, and CJ Mucker, defensive coordinator. And whereas there were two All-State selections from this year's team, captain and junior defenseman Brady Corkle was selected first for Team All-State, and captain and junior attack man Cohen Rose was selected third for Team All-State. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, do recognize the 2022-2023 Alpharetta High School Men's Lacrosse Team for their dedication and determination this season. Recognize their outstanding athletic and academic achievements, and give thanks to the coaches and parents for guiding them through this season. So proclaimed this 22nd day of May, 2023, by the mayor and city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia. Congratulations, gentlemen. We have one last proclamation, and this is for the 2023 Public Works Week. So, Mr. Sucevich, if you would, come and speak on behalf and represent your team at Public Works Department of the City of Alpharetta. If you want to bring them forward, please, come right along. While they're coming forward, we've had some great teams tonight. Three champions, regional and such, in athletes. But we're awfully proud of the team we have here at the City of Alpharetta, because you don't get to your lacrosse games if the roads aren't paved and the lights aren't working. And every day, the hundreds of employees in the City of Alpharetta are working very diligently to make sure that what you need to do the things you do, and your lives and your businesses are made possible by the team in Public Works. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, this is a small sampling of the wonderful people I get to work with every single day in the city. Everyone asks me, what's the one thing that, one word I could use? And I got to use two. It's dedication and unselfishness. These individuals come in when it's crappy weather outside, ice on the road, they're salting the roads, they're looking in our traffic control center where there's damage going on, and they are here sunrise, sunset during those events, as well as for the Taste of Alpharetta, opening up the roads early in the morning, closing them very early in the morning for the events, and I'm just blessed to work with all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Dorito.
Thank you, Mayor.
I, I want to wish everyone in Public Works tremendous continued success with the city. I, I have some stats here that I spoke to the director about this week, and I'm going to read them because I won't memorize them all. I, I want everyone to understand what our Public Works Department contributes to the city every year, 24/7. I, I like to call them the kind of unnoticed soldiers of the city, servants of the city. They provide an unbelievable level of service to us residents, the business community, visitors that come here. A lot of the great things you see around here has their fingerprints all over it. So I wanted to just read out some of the stats of what these ladies and gentlemen actually handle on behalf of everyone here in Alpharetta. We have in the City of Alpharetta that's maintained by the Public Works Department 128 traffic signals. We have over 575 lane miles of roads that they maintain. 235 miles of sidewalk, and that continues to grow as we add more and more sidewalks in the city. Over 130 miles of stormwater pipes, which is a massive undertaking in itself. They manage the facility repairs of 85 of our buildings here as assets in the city. They manage a fleet of over 100 vehicles and pieces of equipment that's utilized to serve the city. And they manage projects and inspections of city projects worth over $125 million right now. And they've instituted successfully a really good glass recycling program that the city was having some issues with, I guess about a year ago, where we, we worked with Public Works to help us improve that recycling service for the citizens here. I do want to recognize a couple of individuals that both Pete and I spoke about this evening. And I don't, I don't think Matt Malone and Corey Chance are here, correct? I don't think they're here. All right. They spend a lot of, and you may be traversing through Winwood Parkway, spending a lot of late nights and early mornings, mornings overseeing the reconstruction of Winwood Parkway, and the city's milling and resurfacing contract over there, and you'll see that improvement come online here in the next, I guess, several weeks and months. Harry, I know Harry's here, right? Harry Bentley. I want to thank him for, on behalf of the mayor and city council, for preparing all the documents to obtain the permit from Georgia Department of Transportation for closing of State Route 9, State Route 9 for the Taste of Alpharetta. And if anybody that, as the mayor pointed out, is probably one of the most successful tastes that the city's experienced. Again, many thanks to, to the people within the Public Works Department. And then Kevin Walls, we recently had some plumbing issues in City Hall. Actually, you'll see that little square up in the back. It was a massive undertaking to repair that. to repair that. He worked diligently on resolving that problem here in City Hall. And also, just recently, we had an elevator problem over in the parking deck that he managed to get addressed, which was an important thing to get done. And I think most importantly tonight, I'm going to recognize Robert Newton. He's here tonight, and he's, there he is. He's retiring on July 5th after 33 years of service to the city, and I want to congratulate him and thank him on behalf of the city, a grateful city, for all the work and effort he's put in. We will miss him. We'll miss his experience, his professionalism, and the many years of service he gave to us. Thank you so much, Rob.
So now I'll do my part and read the proclamation. This is by the mayor and council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, for Public Works Week, May 21st through 27th, 2023. Whereas Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of Public Works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for citizens, even cheerleader gyms. Whereas it is the public's interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and an understanding of the importance of Public Works and Public Works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2023, with the theme Connecting the World Through Public Works, marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association. Now therefore, we, the mayor and city council of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, do hereby proclaim, May 21st through 27th, 2023, as Public Works Week in the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, and urge all citizens to join the representatives of the American Public Works Association to pay tribute to our local Public Works team and to recognize the substantial contributions they made to protect our health, safety, and quality of life. So proclaimed the 22nd day of May 2023 by the mayor of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia, and the city council. I'll give this to the guys that are actually doing the work.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I think. Get a picture yet? So the next item up on our consent agenda is the consent agenda items of the city council work session minutes from May 15th, 2023, the city council meeting minutes from the meeting of May 15th, 2023, the alcoholic beverage license applications, consideration of approval of the following alcoholic beverage license applications, PH-23-AB-10 Flick International Corp., DBA Equifax, JV White by Flick, 1505 Winwood Concourse, Alpharetta, Georgia 30005, and the following consent orders and final judgments for the McGinnis Ferry Road widening projects, including parcel 43, parcel 46, parcel 51, parcel 54, parcel 55, parcel 61, parcel 64A, and parcel 69. Mr. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on the consent agenda?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if there's anyone who would like to come forward and speak on the consent agenda, now's your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion from council?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
I have a motion by Councilman Mitchell, a second by Mayor Pro Tim, that was. In discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your right hand. And it does pass unanimously. So that'll wrap up the consent agenda portion, and we'll move on to the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting. And it begins with PH-23-06/V-23-09 Midgard Change of Conditions and Variants. Director Cook, I believe you have the floor.
Good evening, mayor and council. The public hearing item before you, the map is shown to you on the screen. And the applicant, Midgard Self-Storage, requests a change to previous conditions of zoning and variance to allow for the construction of a three-story, 91,000-square-foot climate-controlled self-storage facility, and it's on 15 acres. The zoning condition change would allow the applicant to modify the location of an access road in order to limit the impacts to a floodplain. And they also have a request for a variance to allow four trees to be removed that are in the Georgia 400 buffer, properties located at 11425 Morris Road at the southeast corner of Old Milton Parkway and Georgia 400. I'll put the old site plan up really quick and show you. So this was the site plan that was approved in 2021. And just to remind everybody, this is Old Milton Parkway, and this is the Georgia 400 ramp. So they are required to have a 60-foot tree buffer along, between the ramp and the building. And the previous plan that was approved had the access road that went into the property and actually kind of hugged the front property line along Old Milton Parkway. And you can see within this yellow area that they've highlighted, with that proposal, there was a planned removal of 116 trees, and it also had additional impacts to the floodplain. So they are requesting that that access road be changed, and I'll show you what that looks like. This would be the new site plan that would be approved. So currently, the plan that's approved goes around the front of the property. The request is to have a direct route, which is less impacts to the stream, as well as less impacts to trees. So this one, if approved, would have removal of a little over 900 versus over 116 on the currently approved plan. The second request that they have is a variance to allow removal of four trees, which are in the Georgia 400 buffer. And I have a tree impact exhibit that'll show you. So one of the things the applicant mentioned to staff when they met is they didn't believe that they needed a variance to request counsel to remove the four trees that are located within the 60-foot tree buffer. However, because there's such an impact to the structural root plate of those trees, it is damaged to the trees, so we are requiring the removal and the replacement of those trees. So the trees in question are shown here. It's the bright green that's shown here. It includes two lobolli pines, a sweet gum, as well as a maple. All of those trees, except for one, are shown to be in poor condition, and the maple is actually shown to be in fair condition. One of our recommendations, if this is approved, is that they replant with trees that are magnolias as well as hollies. If you think about a magnolia tree, of course, there's evergreen and the coverage all the way to the ground. So we believe that that would be a better screening against the building versus the taller lobolli pines that they have in place right now. They also showed you on the exhibit, an area that's shown in orange that is not the required buffer, but we also have a condition of if it's approved, that this area that's shown in the orange-pink color also be planted heavily. And when you add that area that's shown in the orange-pink color to the buffer, you actually average about 78 feet along Georgia 400 versus the required 60-foot. So we believe that that's a good alternative. This item was heard at the citizen zoning information meeting. We didn't have any comments at the citizen zoning information meeting. The applicant also contacted everyone within 500 feet. They didn't have any comments. Staff looked at the request. We believe that since there's a reduction in the impacts to the floodplain, as well as a replanting plan of evergreens that will be included along Georgia 400, we could support. And again, this would not be a reduction in the buffer. This is just replacement of four trees. The recommendation is to approve PH-2306/V-2309 Midgard Self-Storage, subject to the following conditions. Number one, property shall be developed substantially in accordance with submitted plan prepared by AEC dated 2/27/23, except for modifications required to comply with the conditions below. Two, existing tree buffer along Old Milton Parkway shall remain undisturbed, except to accommodate the driveway extension from Morris Road, as depicted on the plan prepared by AEC dated 2/27/23. And three, developers shall remove the four impacted trees in the Georgia 400 buffer, and the area shall be replanted to buffer standards as approved by staff. Additional buffer areas depicted on the tree impact exhibit prepared by AEC dated 2/27/23 shall be plotted and recorded as Georgia 400 tree buffer, and shall be replanted to buffer standards as approved by staff. Four, developers shall replant areas of the stream buffer impacted by access road grading activities to buffer standards as approved by staff. Five, developers shall plant and maintain a mix of shrubs and tall grasses along Old Milton Parkway frontage behind the existing guardrail as approved by staff. Six, signage shall be limited to the north and east sides of the building with final approval by DRB. And seven, conditions of zoning related to file V-2001/E-2002 Midgard Self-Storage variance and exceptions shall remain in effect, except as amended above. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer those.
Do we have any questions for Director Cook? Would the applicant like to come forward at this time?
The site is located at the southwest corner of Old Milton Parkway and Georgia 400. And the site access is going to be from across from Morris Road, which is where it is today at the Waffle House, just for context as to where we go. So this is showing the 2020 plan that was approved. And the biggest reason for moving the road was, when we did this original plan, we thought the least way to impact the stream would be to run the road up to the north, tie it to the culvert, extend the culvert slightly, and then pull it down. As we got into the design and the flood modeling, we realized that that actually had a larger impact on the floodplain than other methods. It seemed counterintuitive, but we ran it through two separate consultants, and they came up with the same conclusion. So we started to look at alternatives of how to make the change work. And what we did, we figured out, was that we had to pull it away from the culvert, which is an area where there was having some backward effects, because the old plan was actually raising the floodplain upstream and downstream. It's fairly unusual for impacts of this type. So what we did is we went ahead and pulled the creek, or pulled the road down, and tied it to where we would cross the creek part with an actual bridge. We're actually having to bridge across this to make the floodplain not have any change within the thing. And that's really the main cause of having to do the site plan, was the impact, or trying not to impact the existing floodplain within this. If you go to the next one, you can kind of see where the change. The yellow that was going up comes down. And the good part about this change is, we actually are impacting less trees, less land, and making it a little easier access in and out of the site. Again, we kind of tried to work with the site as best we can and got outsmarted by the floodplain. The tree variance is very, Kathy did a great job, so I'm not going to go over this too much. But we are impacting four trees. You can see them in dark green. In addition to that, we're actually preserving additional. The orange is going to expand the buffer, so we're not going to be impacting those areas as well. So we're actually trying to keep additional buffer along that Georgia 400 corridor. And all of the trees that are there are either on the 60-foot line or within 15 to 20 feet of the 60-foot line. So there's a very, very small, limited wedge of land that's being impacted. This is representing what's going to be replanted. So we're showing a mix of magnolias, Carolina hollies, and American hollies in and around that buffer area. And you can see where we try to be strategic in the location of those plants to fill in the gaps of the existing buffer, as well as further screen the building. Go to the next slide. And here are some cross-sections where we left the existing buffer as black and white, but then showed our enhancement at probably, I'd say, five to seven years after planting of the magnolias, the two types of hollies, and trying to really screen and further screen. And what those, you'll see the view on the upper side is more towards the end of the off-ramp, and the one down at the bottom side of the sheet is at about the midpoint of the off-ramp. This is something I rarely get to say. The applicant is in agreement with all staff conditions. At this point, I can answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Mitchell?
Just a comment. I remember all this discussion with Don Roelator and all of us being here like it was yesterday, and the path around. I don't know whose bright idea it was to just go straight through there, but it seems like a brilliant, simple plan. I wish we could have come up with this, you know, a year or so ago.
Yeah, we were trying to avoid the floodplain, and actually, like I said, the floodplain outsmarted us.
And doing away with a lobolli pine or tree is, it seems like a lot better plan and much less impact. So congratulations, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if you'd like to come forward and speak, now's your opportunity. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion for council?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd offer a motion tonight to approve PH-23-06/V-23-09 Midgard Change of Conditions and Variants as presented this evening.
Second.
We have a motion to approve PH-23-06/V-23-09, as outlined by Mayor Pro Tim Merkel and seconded by Councilman Mitchell. In discussion?
Seeing none? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. And it does pass unanimously. Congratulations. So we'll move on to the next public hearing item, which is the public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 budget and millage rate levy. Director Harris, I believe you have the floor.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is the first of three advertised public hearings on the budget and millage later on, a few minutes hopefully, during the new business. We will be reading the first ordinances of the budget and approving that, as well as the millage rate. But this is just an opportunity under state law to ensure that the public can come forward and make comments regarding the budget or the millage rate. And that's all I have at this point.
Any questions for Director Harris? Thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
I do not have any public comment cards, no, sir.
However, if you'd like to come forward and speak, now's your opportunity. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from counsel?
So the, the, this is just the public hearing, but the budget ordinance is actually under new business for its first reading. So you would accept the reading.
My apologies. Thank you very much. No, you were right. I appreciate it. So we'll go ahead and close this item. We'll move on to the next item, which is ordinance, the Code of the City of Alpharetta, Georgia Text Amendments, Code of Ethics and Conduct. Ms. Swin, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and read it and then we'll, we'll discuss it. So, "An ordinance by the mayor and the council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, to amend Article 5 of Chapter 2 Code of Ethics and Conduct of this, Code of the City of the, of Alpharetta, Georgia, to amend requirements for the filing of ethics complaints, to provide for the composition of the ethics panel, to provide operating procedures for the ethics panel, to establish procedures for processing ethics complaints, to provide for disciplinary action, to provide for penalties for the wrongful use of an ethics complaint, to provide for attorneys fees to repeal conflicting provisions, to provide for an effective date and for other purposes." So, Mayor and Council, this is still the ethics ordinance that y'all considered at the workshop last week. There were some modest changes made to it since that time. Chief among them were really cleanup, you know, adding in just various things that needed tidying up, some formatting. In addition to that, per the direction of council, I added in a provision to allow for the processing of ethics complaints during the pendency of an election. So previously, the draft had said 90 days leading up to an election, an ethics complaint would not be processed. So that would be told. So for, you know, lack of a better term, statute of limitations under Georgia law, you have a certain period of time to file lawsuits. Under the ethics ordinance, we have a time period under which you can file an ethics complaint. When there is an election coming up, we had stated for 90 days and you would have an extension of that time period on the back end. But there were concerns raised by council to basically allow for the adjudication of an ethics complaint at the elected official's selection, essentially. And so we added a procedure in for that. Otherwise, it is largely unchanged. We did add, under the panel, which still is for now, the three attorney panel, that any of the qualified individuals who would serve on a panel can't have any interest or a business in the city. But they could conduct business in the city. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about the specifics of the ethics ordinance after the, before or after the public hearing.
Councilman Hypes?
Before we go to that, could I just continue on that presentation just for a second before we close it out? Because I want to make reference and just bring everybody's attention to the fact that on Friday, we also circulated a copy of this ordinance that was amended based upon some really good thoughts that Councilman Hypes had. And I'll defer to him to speak about those, but I want, just want you all to know that, you know, there was a, some, some thought about a couple of the sections that gave some protections to elected officials, to have those actually removed and, and to move forward with an ordinance structure that just didn't have those in, have those in there. So I would like to just make reference so that everybody recognizes that that entered our discussion last week. Hopefully, you all had a chance to digest it over the weekend. And we circulated it because after reading through it, it seemed as though it was well thought through and something that you all should consider. So the city attorney is good with what was published as well as what I circulated on Friday, just so that you all have that basis as you start your discussion.
Mr. Lagerblum, I also would just like to clarify. We keep saying that, that time before elections would only affect the elected officials, but as I've seen this implemented by other cities, it also applies to candidates, correct?
I'd have to defer to the city attorney on how that was structured when it was written.
No, it's, as it's drafted, it's for any person who's already an elected official who would then be seeking reelection. So there wouldn't be possibility. I suppose if there were a city official who was subject to having an ethics complaint brought against them and they were running for election, this wouldn't have that same effect. It wouldn't stay that. We could draft it that way if that's a provision that the council wants to give direction on. But as it stands right now, it's for essentially an incumbent.
And that's why I wanted to clarify, as I was reviewing the Georgia municipal associations, you know, suggestions or my recommendations towards ethics ordinances and such. It applies not only to incumbents, but challengers or people who are running for the first time. And so if that's considered at all, I would think it needs to apply to everybody running, because anybody could be vulnerable to political manipulation.
Councilman Hypes?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the work that our city attorney put in on this ordinance following our workshop last week. I recognize that we, we gave her some broad outlines to proceed. But now that we've got a product in front of us, I'd like to propose the following changes to the ordinance that's in the packet. And those changes are to delete section 2 point, or excuse me, 2-196 sub-paragraph F, and that is the 90-day provision relating to ethics complaints within 90 days of the election. I propose deleting that. I also propose deleting the related provision that's in 2-198 sub-paragraph A3. That is also related to the 90-day provision and a waiver of that provision. So my proposal is to delete that. And then, two, one change and one addition to the ordinance. The change would be under 2-198 sub-paragraph D. The second sentence currently reads that the respondent, whoever that may be, that their response shall or is required to be supported by affidavits. I propose that, that the word shall be changed to may, that it be up to the respondent to make a determination at what point in time they want to submit any evidence in response to a complaint that may be filed. And then lastly, adding language under 2-198 sub-paragraph G. This language would go immediately prior to the parentheses where it says ethics hearing. And the additional language to complete that sentence prior to the parentheses would say, "Which hearing shall be held in not less than 30 days and not more than 45 days from date of notice of the hearing." And the reason for that, by the way, is this, this ordinance will apply to our board members, to our commissioners, to our elected officials. And once they receive notice of a hearing, I think it's important if they're going to defend themselves and have a fair hearing where all evidence is presented, that they have sufficient time to marshal their evidence, to obtain documents, if that's part of their response, to bring in witnesses, if that's what they need to do. In a, in a legal setting, we are, in the legal world, provided 30 days notice before an evidentiary hearing. And this would be consistent with the due process that's provided in a legal setting to, again, everybody who would be subject to this ordinance. So with that, with those deletions and those additions, those would be my proposed changes to the ordinance. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Dorito?
In addition to what Councilman Hypes just outlined as considered changes to the draft ordinance, as you know, down in the workshop, I spoke about the, at least, my interest of having residents still participate on the Ethics Commission. I do know kind of the feelings of the council, so I'm not here to kind of debate it, but I would like to at least offer up a, a sense of a consensus and retain the 12 qualified individuals to be selected for the ethics panel to be attorneys in good standing and meet all the, you know, bright line requirements of being able to sit on this board or, or hear an ethics complaint, but remove the requirement that they be from outside the city. So I would at least have asked the council to consider just making it open to any attorneys, both in the city, outside the city. I would love to have half of the panel be residents as well that are not attorneys, but that's, I know that's, that's, that's a non-starter. So that's a suggestion I'd at least ask the council to consider.
Councilman Will?
I feel like we're going into this first reading and we've just recommended some major changes. Quite frankly, I'm not an attorney. I didn't completely follow. And I don't know that I'm ready to vote on it. And I'm, I'm not sure everybody here completely understands what I'm proposing.
Are you asking to table?
Being the new guy, I'm asking to table this until we can have a further discussion to qualify whether these additions should be made.
Do we have a second? Motion fails for failure. Receive a second. Councilman?
I'm on the same track with Councilmember Will here on this. I would, I would ask, when we have applications, when they make changes to us, we ask for copies for the changes. I know that there was a copy sent to us by email on Friday, but is there something that can be pointed to that we can show maybe on the projector of changes? Because I want to make sure that Molly's most up-to-date version matches Councilmember Hypes' most up-to-date and then what Councilmember Dorito said, so we can at least have it all in one word. And if not, then we need time to, to look at it, the facts and what's currently being presented. I, I think that would be smart so that we're all on the same page of what's, what's being presented. But I am in agreement with Councilmember Dorito on, I think he said, striking item, section 2-197D, section 3, do not reside in, in or maintain an office within the city limits of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia. I'm in full agreement with that. That makes it so it can be any attorney with here. I don't think it should be, if you live or work in Alpharetta, that, that should disqualify you to help, help serve the city of Alpharetta. And I, I appreciate Councilmember Hypes, the, the work he did on just changing a little bit of wordage on there to, to make sense, to give a little bit more time to, to somebody that has accused of an ethics violation to have 30 days to look it over. I think that makes sense. And I appreciate him putting a cap on, a cap on that as well, 45 days, so it doesn't kind of go off into eternity. So I, I like what I'm hearing. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page and we can discuss it and that the public has time to see the changes as well. Because I know there's been a lot of information, some on point, maybe some not on point, that, that we can, we can go to it so it looks, that we're totally transparent in our thought process here.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I, I wouldn't be opposed to tabling this. Once we hear from everyone, I, I do agree with, after speaking and hearing from certain members of the public this, this weekend, as I said at the last council meeting, I've been vacillating on this and, and, but I've heard from other members of, of the city who, every, every committee and commission that we have, we, we have representation from our citizens. So I wouldn't mind having three citizens on this, on this, however we choose to, to elect those. I wouldn't mind having it be a, a attorney slash citizen board. I'd rather have, I'd rather have a predominance of, of attorneys with maybe three citizens that, that we, we rotate based on the ones we've chosen so that we're not drawing names out of the hat. I agree with Jimmy and Mayor Gilvin in the fact that if we, if we do it during an election, I, I agree that it should be fair. And it should be not only for those who are already elected, but it should be for those candidates who are running for office, whether it be first time or second time. I, I, I think we should be fair with all of that. And I also agree with the changes that Councilmember Hypes has suggested. I know during the last election, all this is just for our local ordinance, but I had a former mayor that filed a, a ethics complaint against me because I didn't know, I didn't know the address of a donor that gave $200. He could have picked up the phone and called me to get the address, but he didn't. He filed a state ordinance with me so that, just to cause, cause problems and whatever. You know, he's, he's always been homophobic and he continues to be homophobic, and that's not going to change anything. But he could have been a man and just picked up the phone and called me, but he didn't. And so people like to cause these kind of things. And so anything we can do to, to be more upright and citizenlike in our own local ordinance, I'm all for. So thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I can make a couple of comments. One, if it's not going to be directed that we take this back to a work session, I just wanted to let you know, we have not yet called for the public hearing, so I didn't want that to go unnoticed. And otherwise, I have incorporated in my most recent draft the provisions that Councilman Hypes suggested. So I do have a consolidated version. So depending on whatever direction it is that I'm given today, that is not a problem. I can make sure that that gets distributed.
And I'm sorry, what was your point again about the public hearing?
So we haven't called for the public hearing yet. I presented and then council started asking questions. So I just wanted to make sure that from a point of order, we recognize that if this is to move forward today, we still need to call for the public hearing. That's all.
For the public hearing?
For public comment on this item.
Oh, okay.
We haven't had that. It's sorry, it's under the public hearing.
Typically finish our discussion and questions first.
Absolutely, yes.
That's why I was confused. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you. I'm fairly flexible with this. I, I am very strong in making sure that there is certainly a representation from the legal community inside the city, outside. I'm not too caught up with that. I do think, though, if there is to be citizens appointed, I, I do believe that the math will tell you that if the, if the council and mayor each appoints one member, that becomes immediately a position where it can be weaponized. You can take four council members and their representatives. If they're going after one of the other three, would have a conflict in that case. So my feelings are if there is going to be representation from the public, that it be chosen in a different manner than chosen by the individuals up here. It's like picking your own judge. And I, I just, I, I see that when you do the math. The chances of it being weaponized are, are too strong. So, thank you.
Councilman Binder?
Just, just so we can all take a step back in a frame of reference, our first, the first evolution, 2018, it was elected officials acting as the, the, the judges on, on ethics complaints. There was no real way to have an ethics complaint filed. And so it made good steps forward. I think in the one time that it was used, it showed that there was process improvements needed. I think the good news that we can take is, I believe, most of us agree on the process improvements. Where there is maybe stuff that we need to figure out is the composition of the board. So I would like for us to, you know, consider that and do that within due time, not field rush. But a lot of what was presented to us by staff as far as the process improvement seemed like it's good. So maybe one thing at the direction of council is to at least show a version of that. So if anything were to happen that we feel comfortable in the process and the same of things that we would not want to see happen again, those get fixed. So I think we're 90% there on there and it's, it's been. So I think we're 90% there on there, and it's, it's been a good discussion thus far. So that would be one of my recommendations. If it takes too long to look at the composition of the board, maybe we fix the stuff we do agree on first, the process improvements that, that have been good ideas.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Dorito?
I, I just want to say, I appreciate the council actually discussing this, keeping an open mind. I, I, I like the points raised tonight, and I think it's going to end up being a much better solution for the city and a fair solution to avoid weaponization and all the concerns that the council legitimately has. I think we could work on process of how we select those members, Mayor, and the makeup of that, of the board. I, I would love to have some non-attorneys but attorneys as well. Would be my preference, but if we have to go full attorneys, I'm fine with that as well, as long as we open it up to city attorneys as well. But residents of the city, yes. I, I would, I would maybe entertain table in this for that reason, because we can focus on how we come up with a process as well, but I did want to have a discussion before that happens.
Just out of curiosity, Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So, excuse me. The, the challenge on refining it beyond this part is that we've already had one workshop. In the workshop last week, I thought we came out with clear direction for staff, because it was only one person that voiced any concerns with what was brought forward. So help me understand, do we want to have another workshop if we do choose to table this item? Or is S. Wine, do you have any other opportunities available to us on how we refine this to a point without forcing staff to just go back with no clear direction and trying to decide this? Because having one-off conversations isn't a way to resolve this in a public way. Councilman Hypes?
I don't know if this gathers a consensus or not, but if we revisit this and not do a vote because we don't have a document in front of us, if, if the changes that I have proposed could be incorporated into the document, and I would say if 2-197D3 about the resident requirement could be removed, could we have the document resubmitted at a future meeting, maybe next meeting? Of course, it would be published in the packet. I don't even know if that's procedurally, we're able to do that.
So what I was, Chris and I have been talking about this, if there is a version that, like what you have just suggested, striking the two paragraphs about the 90-day waiting period, striking the residence requirement and otherwise adding in the notice provision that you had drafted, if I get clear direction that that is a draft that you want to see again, we could put it on another agenda. What, what the code requires is that we have two readings, but we can have more than that. So if y'all want to keep this moving, you can direct that we advertise it again and that we just add it to another reading, and instead of it being voted on at the second reading, we could have a third reading, so that y'all would have more time to digest it without it ending up on a work session again. I would say, though, that if y'all are not comfortable with those changes and want some more significant changes than that, then that would maybe not be the best course. So it really depends on the pleasure of the council at this point.
Councilman Mitchell?
With all due respect, but striking the resident requirement, the, the change for me was hearing from our residents, and I know there was an article in the paper, and I, I totally respect that, but hearing from our residents that, that we want a resident component, and we feel like we should have that, is important to me. And so I'd like to see that component, and if that requires us having another workshop, I'd, I'd like to do that so that we can get this right. So that's kind of where I am with it. And I, and that may, I've only heard three council members speak on that tonight, so, you know, the votes are there if you don't want that, I, I realize that, but I'd like to respect the citizens that I've heard from and at least hash all that out before we have a vote on it tonight, from my perspective.
And I appreciate the fact you've heard from people. I've not heard the same. The only feedback I've gotten since last week from the members of the public of resident was that they did like the idea of attorneys. So, but refresh my memory, because it's a long document, we've talked about a lot of changes, how would these attorneys, whether they're residents or not, be chosen?
So under constitutional law, essentially, you have to, as a council, appoint anybody who's going to be on a board for basically delegating authority, which the, the ethics com, ethics board is. Essentially, staff would compile a list, would reach out to attorneys, make sure that, you know, they met the qualifications, compile a list, and on, on an annual basis, the council would approve that list. You could suggest members yourselves, or you could strike them and not approve any that were brought forward, but ultimately, council has to approve the list of attorneys.
So a majority of council would have to vote to approve the list?
Yes.
And that could include residents? If we made the change that was suggested?
Yes, the attorneys on the list could be residents or have a business location within the city of Alpharetta, if you struck that, yes.
To Councilman Mitchell's point, I'm fine if the council appoints resident attorneys, but I'm also fine with not making that specific in the ordinance itself. It, it's just understood. If we don't prohibit it, it's allowed.
Right, yes.
And that would be up to this council or future councils to decide whether they wanted to appoint attorneys.
That's correct, yes.
That were in the city or outside the city. Okay. Mayor Proton?
I would just add a caveat to that, to those attorneys being in the state of Georgia.
Yeah, that, that is a requirement.
Councilman Dorito?
Can we consider some non-attorneys, residents, make up the board similar? I think it was Councilman Mitchell you talked about, maybe, somebody mentioned three, maybe three appointments being non-attorneys but residents of the city that would be rotated into each ethics complaint. I mean, as you know, I said this at the workshop at the last meeting, I'm, you know, we, I'm not one that believes we should have everything based upon weaponization of, potential weaponization of the, of the commission, because I have a lot of faith in people to do the right thing in most cases. There's always a one-off that's going to happen, but I don't think we should create an ordinance around, you know, those one-offs, particularly when, you know, we're all, we all reside in the same city, we're all hopefully friends, and, and if someone's going to weaponize the committee, we're going to know that pretty quickly as an organization and deal with it then. But I just, I, I just don't want, I don't want it to be so legalized that the, all attorneys sitting on the board is, is kind of a scary thought for some people that might come under a charge. That's all I'm saying.
I just don't see how we resolve this tonight. There's just too many variables, too many differences of opinion, and I'm not complaining because I learned early in my term on council that when we have differing opinions, we're always better off if we figure it out. You may not be able to get to a unanimous number, but if it, this is critical, it's something important, people have to have faith in our elected officials and in our commissioners and all of our appointees and things like that. And I, I kind of refer to it, it's better to get it right than to get it done tonight. So, but I, I just don't see how in this environment, I think a workshop's going to be necessary for us to have a public conversation and get to a better point. So, Councilman Binder?
With, with that said, I'd like to offer a motion to table, so that we have an opportunity to have a workshop to discuss the composition of the board, and then also give the city attorney, Ms. S. Wine, the opportunity to do a draft of the proposals that Councilmember Hypes and Dorito have brought forward today.
We have a motion. Would we be better served by a tabling, or?
How it's, a table is fine. I, I have my direction, I understand.
Okay, I, I, in the past, I've heard you all offer that tabling means we have to continue to advertise it every week until we're ready to bring forward the business item.
It's semantics, really. It's, it's really, as I understood it, a motion to postpone to a date certain, which would be upon my completion of the draft and putting it on a work session. We, procedurally, I think we're fine.
I can, I can add that the workshop be at our next, next meeting. I mean, I think, I think going after that as soon as possible would be good.
I, I don't disagree, and I can get it done in that time.
So you're fine with the motion and the second?
Yes.
Is everyone clear on what the motions and the second were? All those in favor of tabling as outlined in the motion by Councilman Binder, please raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. So now we'll move on to the new business portion of tonight's meeting, and we'll do the actual first reading of the fiscal year 2024 budget ordinance. Director Harris, Ms. S. Wine, be at the ready, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the first reading of the recommended 2024 budget. There has been one change to the document before you end the budget, and that was an item that was suggested at the last workshop, where we was approved to put in the capital item for Brookside Parkway Road Diet for $40,000, was put into the funded capital, CIB.
Any questions, discussion? Thank you, sir. Ms. S. Wine?
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, adopting the final estimates of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2023, and ending on June 30th, 2024, as its annual budget appropriating the use of funds shown therein as may be needed or deemed necessary to defray all expenditures and liabilities of the city for such fiscal year, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
However, if anyone would like to come forward and speak, now is your opportunity. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. I move that we approve the ordinance, ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, to adopt the final estimates of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2023, and ending on June 30th, 2024, as its annual budget appropriating the use of funds shown therein as much be needed or deemed necessary to defray all expenditures and liabilities of the city for such fiscal year, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
I have a motion by Councilman Binder, a second by Councilman Will, and that was to approve the fiscal year 2024 budget ordinance as outlined by Councilman Binder and City Attorney Molly S. Wine. Any discussion? Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Mr. Lagerblum. I really appreciate the process this year. All those in favor, please raise your right hand, and it does pass unanimously. Next up will be the first reading of the fiscal year 2024 millage rate ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the first reading of the ordinance established in the millage rates. The overall millage rate is remaining the same at 5.75 mils. The general fund millage rate is being set at 4.87 mils, and the debt service fund is being established at, the millage rate is being established at .880 mils.
Thank you, sir. Ms. S. Wine?
An ordinance of the mayor and the council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, to fix the adleum tax rate of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024, and for other purposes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Any questions from council? If anyone wants to speak on the item, now's your chance. Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, sir. I move that we approve the ordinance as read by City Attorney, Ms. S. Wine.
I have a motion by Councilman Binder, a second by Councilman Will. That was to approve the ordinance and millage rate ordinance as read by City Attorney Molly S. Wine. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand, and it does pass unanimously. Next item up is the task order funding award, citywide stormwater pipelining to IPR Southeast LLC. Director Sucevich, stretch your legs.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you end, is the award, task order to IPR for pipelining of our stormwater systems. IPR handles our pipes about 36 inches or less in diameter, and it was a unit price contract that we're working off of. They were the most competitive firm when those bids were submitted on August of, on 21st. And this is about 7,100 linear feet of pipe that will be lined, a little over a mile and a quarter, a mile and a half, almost.
Any questions for Director Sucevich? Thank you, sir. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards on this item? If there's anyone here that would like to speak, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
I move to approve the award of funds in amount not to exceed $1,104,355,012 to IPR Southeast LLC for stormwater pipelining through the city pursuant to the August 23rd, 2021, on call storm piping services contract lying between the IPR Southeast LLC and the city of Alpharetta, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I have a motion by Councilman Dorito, a second by Mayor Proton Merkel, and that was to approve the funding award, task order funding award, citywide stormwater pipelining to IPR Southeast LLC as outlined by Councilman Dorito in his motion. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand, and it does pass unanimously. Moved your hand down so fast, I wasn't sure there at first. It was unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thanks, Pete. We appreciate you, man. That's why we celebrated your department tonight.
Yep.
The next item will be the change orders for design project management services for Webbridge Road, Big Creek Greenway to city limits. You once again have the floor.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is a change order in association, we call it the middle section. It's between the Greenway and Webbridge Way. There are 47 parcels we're going right away from. While we're going after the acquisition of Rightaway Esements, we discover that we have to do some redesigning, and that redesign is to control the cost and actually lower the construction costs. So tonight for you is a change order for Pond &amp; Company at $59,340, and Atkins for $6,000, to modify the design drawings to accommodate the desires of the team as well as the citizens who own the property of that area, and save us money in construction as we proceed forward. So we're going to spend money to save money.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for Director Sucevich? Councilman Dorito?
Director, can you advise the main council of the savings? I mean, we're going to put 59, a little over 59,000, but what is the savings?
About $300,000, we calculate. So, just so they're aware of that. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Ms. Shapiro, do we have any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing no members of the public, close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mayor. I move to approve the following change orders in accordance with the city's procurement policy A, change order number four to purchase order 19000583, Pond &amp; Company, in the amount of $59,340 for design provisions to the Webbridge Road, Greenway to Webbridge Road, Webbridge Way. B, change order number three to purchase order 19000584 for Atkins, in the amount of $6,000 for additional project management services, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by council- I have a motion by Councilman Dorito, a second by Mayor Protim Merkel, and that was for the change orders for the design project management services for Webbridge Road, as outlined by Councilman Dorito. Any discussion? Thanks for saving us money, Pete.
Yep.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand, and it does pass unanimously.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you, sir. Next resolution will be the fiscal year 2023 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Applications. I believe we have Major Meckler coming forward this evening.
Good evening, mayor and council. I am here on behalf of Chief Robinson to recommend the adoption of a resolution for the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice for the purchase of ballistic vests. Specifically, there is a 50% match requirement from the city that totals $17,000, which will come from the grant fund. If awarded, the total funding for this initiative, grant and match combined, will be $34,000. The 2023 grant limits the number of vests requested to the maximum amount of $850 per vest, 40 vests, and the total then reaches $34,000. Public Safety Department estimates needing 40 new vests through calendar year 2023, based on the expiration dates of current vests, which carry the maximum permitted five-year warranty, and forecasted new hiring as well. New ballistic armor costs approximately $750 to $1,100 per set, depending on the level of protection. The total cost for 40 vests, assuming a nominal mix of alternatives, is approximately $44,320. Finally, Public Safety Department will have under $7,979 remaining from the 2021 grant, including the city's match, which will be applied to the need. The Bureau of Justice Assistant maintains a history of awards and payments and may reduce any reward by this amount. This is the same program that we have been participating in for more than 10 years.
Thank you, Major. Ms. Eswine, do you mind reading the resolution, please?
A resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, authorizing the submission of the 2023 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant to the U.S. Department of Justice.
Thank you very much. Any questions from council? Councilman Will?
Major Meckler, how are you?
Good, sir, thank you.
So some of us got to actually do a tour of the facility over in Milton, and we got to see some of the vests and whatnot. So the vests that we're buying, are these, these the new state-of-the-art vests with the lightweight Kevlar and all that good stuff?
They are, sir. It is the newest material, but it is handgun-rated. It is not the rifle-rated plates, which is a separate project, not covered under this particular grant. But it is the armor that everybody wears on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Major. Ms. Shapiro, any public comment cards?
No, Mr. Mayor.
And we'll close public comment. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to adopt a resolution for the submission of a grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice for the purchase of the ballistic vests.
I couldn't tell who that, Councilman Binder. Motion by Councilman Will, a second by Councilman Binder, and that was to approve the resolution as read for the fiscal year 2023 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant Application. All those in favor, please raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously.
Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate you. Next item up is the Resolution 2022-2023 Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. Ms. Eswine? If you want to go ahead and, well, Mr. Rogers is almost here now, so go ahead and read the resolution, please. I'm liable to forget if we wait.
And there are two in the packet. I'm reading the one that is on the, with the normal Alpharetta header, just for clarification, though I do believe they are the same. A resolution by the mayor and council of the city of Alpharetta, Georgia, authorizing the submission of the 2022-2023 Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, pre-application to the Georgia Department of Natural Resources.
Thank you, ma'am. Now let's have some fun, Director Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight I seek approval to submit a pre-application for the 2022-2023 Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, which is a Department of Interior federally funded and a Georgia Department of Natural Resources state administered grant. We intend to request the funds for the replacement of wooden poles and old light fixtures for all of our athletic fields at North Park. Current wood poles and the old metal halite lights fixtures are 30-plus years old and need replacement for improved safety, improved playability, and cost efficiency. We would be replacing 59 poles, 276 new LED lights, fixtures, and the necessary design work. Total proposed project cost is $1,405,000. Of this total, $500,000 would be funded by the grant, if awarded, and the remaining 905 would be responsibility of the city and would come from unallocated capital funds or by reallocating funds from other city projects. Pre-application is due May the 31st. Applications are reviewed and ranked in June and July. Second-level application announcements are sent out in September. Second-level applications are due February the 1st, 2004, and grants would be awarded in the fall of 2004. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, sir. Councilman Binder?
Not a question, but just really appreciate you doing this. You call it the multi-purpose field, but I'm hopefully calling it the soccer field, too, on North Park. My daughter's been playing there every week, and I've been seeing those poles, and I'm like, ooh, yeah, Morgan's right, we do need to change those out. And you've been, you've been saying that for a couple of years, so I appreciate your perseverance and patience to get that knocked through the list.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question.
Mr. Lagerblum, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just to clarify for the, just so we're all on the same page with, for the record, this is a pre-application. To the extent it's approved, we would have to come back and seek your approval for that matching fund. So I just want you all to know that those dollars have not been identified. That's a big number, $900,000. Not to say we can't find it, but they will have to be prioritized with the rest of the projects in the city at the time. You all will have a bite at that apple. What you're approving tonight doesn't mean you're also committing that $900,000.
Thank you for bringing up that point. Just to make sure I'm clear on that. So if it's not awarded until '24, do we have to have the budget done by then?
There would be ways that we could bring a budget amendment forward to you to amend whatever budget we're operating in at the time that this approval might come in. It likely would come in in fiscal year '24. We would look at other existing capital projects, as well as some funds that we always do maintain in an unallocated fashion in the budget, and if you all felt fit that this was good money to accept, then we would just, through a budget amendment, allocate those dollars to the project.
Okay. Just want to make sure I had that straight in the timeline and when the commitment would have to be made. Thank you, Director Rogers. Any other questions from council? Ms. Shapiro, any public comment cards?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. We'll close public comment, then. Do I have a motion from council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion that council adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of the 2022-2023 Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant, pre-application to the Georgia Department of Natural Resources, and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Hypes, a second by Mayor Protim Merkel. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your right hand, and it does pass unanimously. We do have one workshop item on the agenda for this evening, and that's the Webbridge Dog Park Opportunity, request and funding provided by private donor. Director Rogers, a little more fun.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, well, Webbridge Park is one of Alpharetta's true gems. Located east of Georgia 400, it serves as our east side flagship park. One of Webbridge Park's frequent users has approached the city about the possibility of the Mulroy Family Foundation funding a dog park in this beloved park. Nate Hand, our Webbridge Park supervisor, has identified a location in Webbridge Park that would be an ideal location for a dog park. The area sandwiched in between the first parking lot and the exit road would not be suitable for many other activities. Nate has put together a draft proposal for the park, as well as a draft budget. The renting is currently on your monitors, and the budget figures came in at $53,285. The foundation has agreed to fund up to $50,000. We presented this concept to you tonight and to the Recreation Commission on Wednesday night to get your feedback on the project. We would like to move forward with putting a full plan and formal budget together and then returning with the information to the commission and the council for formal approval. The concept includes two access gates, as well as two connected fenced-in areas, one for small dogs and one for large dogs. The area inside the fence would remain natural. Again, this is, it's just not a formal request. We just want to, before we go, sit down with the foundation and start talking specific and get the plan drawn up. We want to make sure that there wasn't any objection to us moving forward with this idea.
Any questions or comments for Director Rogers? Councilman Binder?
Only because we lived through Waggy World. Do you feel like this is a good location as far as drainage and all the?
Yes, we do.
Possible issues with quality of the dog park?
Absolutely, we do. We've, we've looked at it, and we've actually had a couple of landscape architect friends of ours to look at it and make sure that they were seeing the same things we were. So as we're putting the full plan together, we feel confident that those, there won't be any issues with that.
Just want to make sure there's not a $200,000 fix after we do a $53,000 ribbon cutting. Okay.
Councilman Mitchell? Is this a local family?
Yes, it is. Actually, the gentleman that heads up the foundation is, comes into Webbridge quite often. To date, they, the foundation has donated through our bench program, our memorial program, two benches and two swings at Webbridge. They're just a local family that really enjoy Webbridge Park.
Please express our sincere thanks and gratitude.
I will, I will, and as, as we are moving forward and when we come back for approval, we'll, we'll make sure that there's a member of the family here to address any questions that you may have.
Awesome. Thank you. Any other questions? Any other concerns? I think you have pretty clear direction. Do you feel like you're comfortable with the?
Yep.
All right, sir.
So I think there's only one thing left to do, and that's to give you a push.
You should have been facing the camera. We'll end up the workshops on that note. If there's anyone here that would like to come forward and make a public comment, now's your chance. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Reports? Councilman Hype?
Well, the director of fund just walked off, but I've got a list of fund reports here, including over the last week, Sherrill &amp; Company Horse Show took place May 13th and 14th. It was a great success. We had over 250 horses, including those from Florida, Alabama, South Carolina, and Tennessee, and 750 people were in attendance, including horse and non-horse families. So our investment in the equestrian and equine area is really paying off over at the Will's Park upcoming. We've got Food Truck Alley is coming back to downtown, be 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Is that this? Yeah, this Thursday. Will's Park Pool opens this Saturday, May 27th, so we know Memorial Day is around the corner, and with Memorial Day, you've got the Alpharetta Arts Street Fest, May 27 and 28, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. At The Grove, which is immediately behind the Alpharetta Community Center, between that and Will's Park, and that street fest features an outdoor gallery with more than 100 artists from across the country. And then on Memorial Day, we have the annual Memorial Day Tribute, presented by the city of Alpharetta and the Rotary Club of Alpharetta in Brook Street Park. That will start at 9:15, right behind City Hall. It's always a great moving ceremony in that evening. Further celebrating Memorial Day, the Alpharetta Symphony Orchestra Memorial Day Concert, also in Brook Street Park, and that starts at 7:30 p.m. on Memorial Day evening.
Thanks, sir. Any other reports? Mr. Lagerblum, just confirming, we do not need an executive session this evening?
We do not need an executive session this evening, and just if I give you a quick report, take less than a minute. Just to let you know, I know we're still testing the sound in this room and these microphones, and I've heard many of your feedback, and I, if I were to capture your feedback, I would say you're really not, not satisfied with the, with the sound at this point, and I think we get that. We've got the vendor coming back on Thursday. I've heard also your comments about the voting equipment not being up and running yet, and I'll get an update on that tomorrow, but I think we share some of your thoughts and your concerns, so I just want to be forthright in saying that, and we're working on it. They'll be back here Thursday. It's got to get better, because it can't get any worse. So.
Never say never.
Just, just stand by on, on the sound getting better. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. That being said, this meeting is adjourned.